Good evening, everyone. We are now going to start our meeting on the Subcommittee on Conference to be held on Monday, May 9th, 2022, at 6:00 P. M. This meeting will take place in the Chelsea Chambers to discuss the following matter. Discuss the creation of Recreation and Parks Department. Officials invited to attend the Subcommittee meeting. City Manager Tom Ambrosino. All Honorable Members of this Chelsea City Council. The Recreational Affairs Division Director Bee Carrata. Department of Public Works Director Lou Mamallet. All Members of the public. At this time, I'll ask the Clerk to read the role.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Tanevi Garcia. Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Abadina.
Here.
Counselor Brown. Counselor Vito.
Present.
Counselor De Jesus.
Present.
And Counselor Judy Garcia.
Present.
Three, five, seven, eight members.
Okay. This was an order that was resulted from requests by Counselor Recupero into discussing the possible creation of a Recreation and Parks Department. So, since this is his motion, I'll allow him to open up the discussion and allow him to guide the questions.
Okay. Thank you for coming. And there's a few, couple of questions. We used to have an old park department. We had one before. And it consists of a Superintendent of Parks, part-time secretary, three T B W workers on the Parks Department, a park commission. The park commission was, permits were approved by the park commission, three to five members. Was a commission like we have, any other commission, like we have any commission. Usually scheduled and dates were submitted so that all had a chance of using the parks equally. Organized leagues were the first providing they met the deadline. So, what, this will consist of, more or less, it will be, we spent money to clean up our parks all the time. Spent 200, 250, depends. This, what we'll do, we'll create, more or less, a hands-on approach on us, making sure that our parks are cleaned and well taken care of. And it will probably cost us less than what it costs us now. Because if you hire three employees, what is three employees gonna cost? Fifty thousand apiece? Fifty-two thousand? So you have three, there will be 150, 160,000? And whatever. It could run under D P W. It doesn't matter how it works. It could, you could have, you can even have Bee as the Commissioner of the park, whatever it is, if that's the case. But more or less, if you have a commission like we used to have, where it doesn't cost anything. Those are just people on a board, deciding what it is. And I see how our parks are maintained. They're not maintained as well as they could be. I see it all the time. I get complaints all the time from a lot of people, that the parks are not maintained. Well, this will be a division that will take care of just the parks. A lot of other cities have it. They all say, all cities, most, 90% of the cities have a program that runs in a parks department. Parks and Recreation, they all have it. And I was wondering, our city should have the same thing. In the long run, it will be beneficial for us to have one than not to have one. Because you don't know. As the cost of maintaining increases, so will the cost to us of hiring an outside firm to do it. And still, when you hire an outside firm, do we have someone that particularly goes in top of them and says, here, you didn't do a right job, or you didn't do a great, whatever it is, right? And I believe that, but this is my own opinion, personal opinion, is that if the city has a hand-on experience in doing and cleaning its own parks, we'll get a better job. Because they've got to be accountable more than a company. The only thing you can do with companies, don't hire again, because they got to bid it. So if they do a crappy job one year, they turn around and say, okay, we're gonna get our money, and next year they'll hire somebody else. So this is the difference between us having our own division and hiring an outside company. Well, I need a little time to her, she wants to ask questions, so I reserve more time later. Is that okay with you?
Well, so that's, you basically summarize your suggestion, so as now you'd want the city manager to respond to your idea of creating a Parks Division.
Well, we'll have to go to you first to ask him.
No. I'll allow, I'll allow, ask the city manager to respond to the idea presented by Counselor Recupero that we create our own Parks and Recreation Department.
So, my opinion is, the city does not need to do any major organizational reorganization to accomplish the goals that you wish to accomplish. I want to separate two concepts. The maintenance of parks and programming of parks, which I include the permitting and the, that's the permitting and the programs that go on in the parks. In cities I'm familiar with, including my former city, those were separate and distinct jobs handled by separate entities. There was, for maintenance, a Parks Division within the D P W. And there was for programming, a Parks and Recreation Department. We have a similar setup here. We have a D P W, we have a Recreation and Cultural Affairs Division, that essentially have the capability of doing both things. But, at least in the maintenance piece, as I conceded last year, we have a lot more work to do. I concede that the maintenance of our parks is not the best. And part of the problem is that this D P W has never had a dedicated crew just for parks. Again, I don't want to keep referring back to my old job, but in another city, I had a Parks Department within the D P W. There were four individuals, a supervisor and three laborers. And their sole and exclusive work during the months of, basically, April to October, was taking care of parks. After October, they sort of folded back into the general laborer force of the D P W, and did typical stuff D P Ws do during winter. Snow removal, cleanup, et cetera. But from April to October, they exclusively worked on parks. In addition to that, though, there, I also had outside vendors doing, that were contracted to help with parks. It's a, it's a significant task. Last, about a year ago, roughly, I conceded to this council that we needed to do something better. We presented at one point a idea to have a robust sort of neighborhood group. The council decided they wanted to go in different direction, and we, at least, I presented to the council at that point, look at, let me hire an outside vendor to do some parks work, we'll get a contract, and we will start considering whether we want to have a separate Parks Division within the D P W, to hire a few employees that will exclusively focus on parks. I didn't recommend that in this year's budget. I'm still thinking about it. The only reason I didn't recommend creating a separate Parks Division within the D P W in this year's budget, or simply adding more people to focus exclusively on that, was two-fold. One, we had a leadership change in the D P W. So, I wanted to give the new leadership a chance to see what we're doing in our parks. See if their, what their recommendation was for a way to make our parks better. We do, as you said, have a contract onboard this year, as we did last year, to take care of the park. We're paying that vendor roughly $200,000 to do weekly and daily work at all the various parks in the city as our outside vendor. In addition, D P W is helping, but we don't have, at this point, a dedicated crew. One of the tasks I've asked Lou to do this season is pay close attention to this vendor, and let's see if we're getting value from that contract. And two, make an assessment as to what the personnel needs would be if we want to pay some particular attention to parks. Do we need three individuals? Do we need a supervisor and three laborers? Do we need a supervisor and two laborers? What will it take to comprehensively clean our parks? And in addition, do we need, in addition to that, will we still need some services? Maybe not as robust as we have right now, but some services from an outside vendor. He is going, he's been tasked with evaluating that work this year, and then giving me a recommendation at the close of this calendar year, so that by next budget year, FY '24, I will have something in my budget. There was a second reason I was reluctant to do this this year, and that is because the FY '23 budget before you already has 13 new positions in it. And I was getting to a point where I felt adding another four positions in the budget was a little too much to absorb in just one fiscal year. I don't think in FY '24, we'll be looking to add that many new positions in the budget. And so I'll feel better about beefing up a DP, a potential D P W Parks Division. I think if we have a dedicated group of D P W employees focused exclusively on parks, as many cities do, we will be able to accomplish what you want to accomplish in the, in the realm of maintenance. In the realm of programming, honestly, I think we have a structure in place that works. We have a Recreation and Cultural Affairs Division. It provides programming, both within public facilities, mostly in this, almost exclusively in the schools, and outside in the parks. And it has a pretty robust calendar of events. I have to say, looking at their summer calendar, I have this here, you've had it, their pamphlets available in Watts Place and City Hall, including my office, it's a pretty robust schedule of events for this coming season. That both has programming within some of the school buildings and programming out at our parks. Could it be even more robust? Of course. And I think we are looking to improve and add to the amount of money we're spending, particularly given that this was a priority of the ARPA Community Advisory Committee, to do more in terms of youth activities. So, I do expect we'll be spending some additional money. It will likely be that certainly by FY '24. We will have more money in the Recreation and Cultural Affairs Budget for programming. But in addition, I do expect that with some of this ARPA money, that the committee has advocated for spending on youth activities, we may be able to do even more in advance of the next budget season. So, I think we can accomplish what you want in terms of both programming and maintenance within the current structure. Yes, you could, I guess, recreate what the city had at one time, which is a Parks Commission, an independent authority that had its own employees. I just wouldn't, I don't think you need to kind of blow up the current system to accomplish what you want to accomplish. I think we can accomplish it within the current organizational structure you have. But I do think, at the end of the day, it is going to require hiring some additional D P W employees who will exclusively, at least during the period from April to October, dedicate their work to parks. But I did not do it this year.
You want to ask a question?
Uh. Oh, wait a minute.
You want, sure, Mr. President, you want to?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Because earlier you said I didn't have to ask you to ask him any questions. You relaxed the room.
Counselor, Counselor Lopez has a question, followed by Counselor Garcia, and then Counselor Vito. And then we'll get back to second round.
Thank you, guys, for coming. My question is, I know you mentioned maintenance. We definitely need more maintenance. I was there Monday about 2:30, 3:00 o'clock, after, you know, the events that go on, on the weekends. The trash barrels were overflowing. So we need to look into that. You know, clean it up. I saw a guy, a guy from Rock, I think, and a little kid, going around the field and pick up some trash. But the barrels, they don't even touch it. They were full. Another thing is, I haven't checked yet, but I got a complaint that the toilets, they don't open when the people are using the field, and they took the toilets away or something. You know, instead of getting better, we're going, going worse? That's just a question. And regarding maintenance, we need to do better. Highland Park, Highland, the little park over 100, Bellingham, somewhere there, I got a lot of complaints about, you know, that park is not being, taken care of. People who have dogs go there, and they just make whatever they're gonna do, they don't pick up. We need to check on this. A lot of kids go there and play. You know, the kids can be playing around with this old, this stuff that the owners don't pick up. The cemetery on Central Avenue, same thing. Was walking there the other day, all of the sidewalk, you know? The owner of these dogs, they don't pick up after that. I don't know what can we do, but at least, if we get like the council ones, maybe we look better on these parks to clean up.
So, fair comments, fair criticism, I hear you. I just, I want to make clear that, by no means am I suggesting that because I didn't add and create a new Parks Division, I'm sort of, we are washing our hands of the need to focus on parks. The D P W Public Works, the Acting D P W Public Works Commissioner has been told that, notwithstanding the fact that he didn't get new specific employees for parks in this budget, he does have to look at allocating his resources this summer, so that more attention is paid to parks within his existing workforce. And so, we are gonna try to have that become a bit of a priority for the D P W over the course of the next few months, to take care of parks, notwithstanding that we don't yet have a Parks Division within D P W. So, I, I agree that the condition of the parks need to improve.
Counselor Garcia, and then Counselor Vito.
Thank you. So I, so thank you to my Counselor Recupero for bringing this to our attention and scheduling this meeting. I have a few clarifying questions, just to lay the context and ensure that this is, that I have my information correct. The Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs, this is not its own department. Is this under Human Health and Services?
It is, but it operates as a sort of independent department, just as the library and all the affairs does. But technically, in our organization, it is under the jurisdiction of a Health and Human Services Director. And that is the organizational structure that existed here when I arrived. I'm not really sure I see a need to change that. We do, we are hoping to hire a new HHS Director over the course of the next few months. Right at the moment, I would say the Deputy City Manager is operating as the person to whom folks like Bee and Sarah and Tracy report to. But yes, it is not an independent department in terms of their direct reports to me. They have a direct report to a HHS Director, but that position has been unfilled since December of 2020.
Okay. So the, and this is from speaking for my constituents and attending meetings. I know that the overall sentiment from conversations happening because of ARPA is, you know, our residents are seeking more programming and more capacity for our recreational departments and our community investments in that. So I guess my next question would be, my assumption is that this department is underfunded, but please enlighten me. What is the funding currently for this department that falls under HHS?
I mean, I would say it has significant more funding than when I arrived, that's for sure. I mean, I did make a point to beef up this Recreation and Cultural Affairs Division, because I wanted more programming. Could it use more funding? Yes, it could. And I think there are opportunities, given the priority that the ARPA Community Advisory Committee identified, and the money it set aside for youth activities. So, I do expect that there should be additional money, and it is my intent to put some additional money in the FY '24 budget. I didn't really include a whole lot of new money in the FY '23 budget, because I anticipated we would be spending some of these ARPA funds on youth programming.
What is the current budget?
I'd have to get my budget book out. It probably hasn't increased significantly from FY '22, but I can grab the budget book. You may have it in front of you.
And while we grab that budget, I know Bee is here, so if she feels comfortable, what is your current capacity now? How many employees are working under you for recreation?
Hi, everyone. I thank you for allowing me to come to this meeting. So, right now, we have two managers, and we have probably three program assistants. Hopefully to have a fourth program assistance come this fall. We also have an ESOL Coordinator. And then we, of the whole year, we have, I would say, approximately 20 part-time staff in activities. And then volunteers also that are running activities. And I would say of those volunteers, there might be about four.
Okay. And now my next question is, my understanding is the recreation part of the cultural, so it's Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Recreation is essentially the, it's the equivalent of the community schools.
So, that's a very good question. When I came here in 2002, what attracted me to this city was not community schools. What attracted me, because my graduate work was in Recreation Administration, was that I was perplexed why this beautiful, complicated little city didn't have a Recreation Department. It had something called Community Schools. And so, when I, I took it on, because I'm, you know, you have these wildlife warriors, I'm a Recreation Warrior. I did, all my life I've been in Recreation. And I, and Recreation to me is recreation, it's not just sports. It has a wide variety of different programming. It has a wide variety of different programming, sorry. So, the, when I came here and I, and spoke with the past city manager, it didn't look like at all that they were going to pull out of hibernation the Recreation and Cultural Affairs, which was in the charter. They were going to keep with Community Schools. And at that point, I called the Coalition of Community Schools in Washington, DC, spoke with the executive directors there. And again, they said, you know, Community Schools can take on different types of looks, and at this point, put a lot of attention into the area of Recreation. We're still gonna be keeping some academic, which we have, where we've put on, I think, a substantial amount. When I came, there was 26 classes. At one point, I had 180. So, I'm extremely proud of the staff, and also all of you, who've helped to keep it affordable, and also have, again, supported in every effort to have high-quality programming coming in. And this summer is no different. If you have a chance to look at our booklet and really look, and I asked the city council to please do that, just look at the different programming, and lots is free from programming from around, you know, the Boston area, that we just can't replicate anywhere. So, yes, at this moment, in 2015, 2016, when City Manager Ambrosino came, he pulled out of hibernation Recreation and Cultural Affairs, the name, Community Schools has come under as a program, which it was supposed to be. If you look at the charter, it was a program underneath Recreation and Cultural Affairs. And so, we're gonna beef that up with more computer technology, mentoring programming. But at this point, I think that we've got a very amazing, stable staff, both have graduate work in sports management and also in the arts and recreation. And I'm extremely, you know, optimistic with even more funding, that we can do even more. So, and, but I do ask all of you to please look at at least the current booklet right now. I think, you know, I look at other cities all the time, and, you know, even though we don't have the amount of land, or we have the amount of space, or we have a waterfront, or we don't have a pool, we try to be able, and we're going to do even a better effort of, of working with other organizations. We're now having programming in the library, programming in the senior center, and hopefully more programming up at the Boys and Girls Club on off-hours, so we can do more. So, again.
Before I let you go, thank you for that. Can you remind, can you refreshen, your programming starts at what time?
So, in the summertime, it's starting at nine in the morning.
And then as of today?
There's programming going through the day from nine to probably 8:30 at night. And that, not to mention, we are, we concentrate on the permitting, the leagues, pardon me, permitting the parks, the athletic fields and courts. And we are also working hard now to, with the school department, to see more accessibility to the stadium, to Merritt Park, which is, you know, Mary C Burke Complex, and to Carter Park, to again, how we can have better planning, better structures, better schedules, so we can be able to use those even more. Since the pandemic, all new people have come into the school department. And for two years, we have had, you know, no really relationship, because they've been working so hard remotely. But this year's been a turning point, because we're now all back to work, and so we're meeting all the people who are in the schools and forming those relationships. And I'm hoping, again, that that will lead to even more accessibility.
My last question before Tom gives me the budget is, what challenge is your department facing at the moment?
I would say, the biggest challenge right now is getting people back to our classes. To get people back to the classes that we've had, the amount of attendance we've had before. I mean, we would have, we have three, we have three seasons, a fall-winter season, a spring and a summer. And we would do anywhere from maybe 500 to 625 people who would register. We have almost 2,000 on our database. I think right now, we are still working really hard to look at our advertisement, how we're getting out in different languages, what we're doing in terms of reaching out for people to come back. We're still wearing masks in schools. That's not been easy, to wear masks in schools, especially if you're, at one point, we had, before the pandemic, about 450 ESOL, even, in students. And right now, we're probably about 120. And so, we're just like slowly but surely trying to get more and more to come each season, you know? So, it's, it's bringing people back after this pandemic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Vito?
Yeah, so just before I turn to the bud, I just, this idea of community schools has always driven me a bit crazy since I arrived here. It's really just a branding of programming in the schools. Every Parks and Rec Department does programming within school buildings. It's just our Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department, and it has that name for, it's just, it's semantics. It could be called the Parks and Recreation Department. It has programming in the schools, like every other Parks and Rec Department, and it has programming outside in the parks. And so, the community schools is just a brand for what goes on within the school buildings. I've really tried hard to get away from that branding, because somehow it's led people to the impression that the city really doesn't have a Parks and Recreation Department, and that is not true. Our Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department is indeed a Parks and Rec Department, as you would understand that in, in most other communities.
In terms of the budget, so the proposed FY '23 budget is just over $800,000. That's up about 10% over last year. I will, I don't have the FY '15 budget, which was in place when I arrived, but I would venture to say, it's probably a third of this amount.
Counselor Vito?
My sister counselor asked some very good questions, and the one that really, that, that I feel that I really am concerned about is about capacity. And while I understand that you're not at full capacity yet in terms of the, I'm talking to Bee, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be talking to Bee. In terms of the amount of people that are volunteering, my concern is about capacity in terms of staff. Now, I also like, want to be clear that before I was on the council, I got on 2016, there wasn't a Recreation Department, or it was dorm- wasn't a recreation department, or it was dormant, as Bea said. So there wasn't anything happening in terms of even trying to do programming outside of that. Everything was the community schools. There's so much to talk about here, but I guess the biggest concern that I have, sorry, Bea, I guess the biggest concern that I have, and I'll just lay it all on the table, and I might ask a Recupero question that might not be a question. Sorry, Recupero. Okay. But I guess the issue here is, the Chelsea Community Schools in and of itself is an amazing, abundant program. And we reignited the recreational department and it's like, hey Bea, handle all of this. And I just feel like it's a lot, and from the beginning, when we first wanted, when we were asking you to recreate the recreational department, I remember senior council member Robinson asking questions like, but this is separate from Chelsea Community Schools. We can't expect the public to think that, we can't be surprised that the public doesn't recognize that we have a recreational department when everything seems to be happening through Chelsea Community Schools. And so personally, I think that we need to create more positions and expand this a little bit more and work more in cohesion. Because it doesn't make sense to me that we have a recreational department that Bea's running it, but she's at Chelsea Community Schools, yet we're giving over $100,000 to Mimi Greenie to do recreational activities outside of all of this. So how are we, we can't just have a subcommittee meeting and ask you for my money and we're going to react to an issue when it arrives. We can avoid this from the beginning with better planning. This isn't saying that you haven't done your due diligence, or Bea, or anyone hasn't. It's about, okay, we started this new recreational department in 2016, great, now how can we improve it? Because we can't just expect that, oh, we started it and that's it, it's the end-all, be-all. Our parks are disgusting. I live across the street from the park that Councilor Lopez talks about. It doubles as a dog park, a tot lot. It's, the teenagers hang out there because we don't have recreational activities for teenagers. While the recreational department has done a great job at doing events that cater to our younger population, there is very, very minimal for our teenagers. And so they're hanging out at these parks, that's also a dog park, but it's not. There are signs that say, no dog waste, and let five feet next to it, there's like a doggie station with poop bags. What are we doing? I just feel like we're not, we're not really paying attention to what we're doing and it just, we just need to get better about it. It's not enough to say, next year, we're going to look, Lou Mamelet's going to look at the outside. Why are we paying outside vendors to clean our parks? I can tell you right now, that outside vendor is not working. I can tell you right now, the money we're giving Roca to clean these parks, it's not working. There are things they cannot do, there are tools they cannot use. So we can't just say and bypass and say, oh, it's all done because Roca's handling it. That's not the truth. So I'm, look, I'm not here to bite your head off, but I'm here to just give, like, let's be real about this. Like, we're not really doing a good job at paying attention at what we're doing and how do we organize this so that everybody wins.
So I, I'm not going to push back on the park maintenance. I agree with you. I'm going to push-
And it's not just, in fairness, it's not just that park.
Understood.
It's parks across the city.
I agree.
We can't keep building and developing and bringing people with their dogs and then think that there's not going to be an additional toll on our city. We're not, we're not, we're not, there's something that's not connecting here.
I agree with you. I've got to do something about park maintenance. I'm just, I just need a tiny bit more time to figure out the final end result. In the interim, though, I'm not ignoring the parks. Lou has been told, you've got to take your existing streets and sidewalk crew and figure out a way to get them to spend more time in the parks. And we need to do that. Lou knows that, and we're going to try to do that over the course of the summer. I do think, I expect that at the end of the day, meaning at the end of this calendar year, I'm going to have, in the next year's budget, some beefed-up DPW proposal for maintaining parks in a more systematic way. It may still include a place for an outside vendor, just because parks are a lot of work and sometimes you need both, as I had in another community. But you will have that for the next budget, you have my solemn word on that. I will, do want to, so I'm not pushing back on maintenance, you're 100% correct. I'm going to push back a little bit on programming because I do think that this, we do provide some decent programming outside in the parks in the course of the summer season. Could it be better? Of course it could be. And I would say Bea would be the first to recognize that. And would it require that another person be hired to assist in that department? Perhaps. And if that is the case, we'll do that. I guess I'll let Bea respond more specifically. Okay.
My question is also, Mimi Greenie does great programming in the city, right? Should that not be in the recreational department? From the beginning, she was in the planning department, and I argued about her position, period. And what did you do? You gave her a union position and you put her in your office. Who, what department is she in? I still don't know. Does she do good work? Absolutely, I'm not taking anything away from her. But it also undermines the creation of these departments that we're doing in order to provide more programming for our community. And my concern here is more so about programming for older teenagers. Because we do Easter egg hunts and candy, that's beautiful, it's great. When my daughter was younger, she loved that stuff. I had to beg her to come to a city council meeting because there isn't anything for her to do now in the community. And so, and also, let's be honest, that when you came in as well, the permitting part of the job was in the city clerk's office. So we're just still, we're still getting our feet wet here in terms of trying to figure all of this out. But it doesn't make sense for one department to be giving out permits. I, so let's say I'm going to house an event, like you know I do the movement basketball league, I'm going to have an event. Okay Bea, let me get a permit. Thank you Bea. I go to the park and the park is a hot mess. So then I have to go and luckily, I have phone numbers, so I could call DPW. But the regular person that's renting these parks doesn't, they don't have these options. So that there is an intersection here that we need to kind of, so when you say address it systemically, right, is that what you're talking about? About feeding the flowers in the intersections? Because that's where we really, that's the big issue that we have. It's that one department doesn't talk to the other, and then you have one in your office, I don't know what department she's in, but she's doing events and she's getting a whole lot of money. It's just, all of it is just everywhere.
So in terms of, I, I think permitting does belong within the programming piece, within a parks and recreation department, or as we call it, a Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department. I think permitting belongs there. Should there be better, close cooperation with the DPW? Yes. I'm hope, I know that Bea and Lou have started to meet more regularly to try to make that happen so that there is this, this cohesiveness and clear understanding that when Bea's permitting a park, it's going to be prepared for the people who are going to use it. That is something that we need to work on, and I believe the two of them have been trying to establish that in the last couple of months. You know, in terms of Mimi, who's positioned as civic design and engagement specialist, some of the stuff she does is sort of closely connected with our Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department. Some of the stuff she does, though, is also closely connected to a community development department. So she is housed in community, I know she sat in my office for quite a long time, but that was really due to space constraints. We've sorted that out. She is back in the department in which she is budgeted. The, so there is a close connection between what she does and what Recreation and Cultural Affairs does, but she also does some aspects that are closely related to the work of Alex Train's department. So, you know, I think she's properly placed, but, you know, I can see why you could raise that question. I don't see the need to change that at the moment, but, you know, I guess I can look at anything.
I just think that the Parks and Recreation Department that Councilor Recupero is proposing is not that far-fetched for considering what our needs are in the community. And I can understand you not wanting to start a whole new department, we're coming, I don't know if we're coming out of a pandemic, with everything that's been going on in the city and I understand that part. I just think that we have a lot of need, a lot of need, and it's not enough to continue to invite people to our city and then like bring your car, your kids to this crappy park where there's literally poop everywhere. It's just, it's not, we can do better. And it's not enough to say we're going to build all of these parks for the sake of saying we have green space if we're not going to maintain them.
I think I can solve it within the current structure. I guess that's what I'm telling you. I don't know if Bea, you want to talk about additional programming that, you know? I think what we've, what we have, especially for the summer, is pretty robust. As I said, we can always expand and there are resources that should allow us to do that.
The question for Bea, I guess, would be those staff members that you mentioned, the two, right, let's see. Two managers, two program assistants. Is that specific to the recreational department or are you talking about community schools as well? And I also want to know about your capacity, because prior to the recreation of this department, you were already doing Chelsea Community Schools and it's a lot.
Community schools, the way that I approached community schools through a lot of consultation, not just my own, came from, was recreation, was completely recreation-based. Community schools has different types, it could be the Children's Aid Society, the Molly Starks, it could be the, a school can be a community school. It takes different shapes and different forms depending on who runs it. So when I came in as a background in Recreation Administration and I saw a lack of that, I also saw my predecessors, how much recreation they had in there, that I continue to have that. I feel community schools at this point is back to where it should be as a program underneath Recreation and Cultural Affairs. And we are going to look at it as a more academic approach into it, to have a lot more aspects of that, and we have to develop that. I want to remind the counselors that we got started in probably getting new staff in 2017, 18, and then for two years, we've had a pandemic here. We've done complete remote for two years. We couldn't get into those spaces. So it's not like all these programs we weren't doing. We did an incredible job when this broke out. I remember even when it broke out in that, in March, I think it was almost 600 different refunds and credits we brought back to people quickly and we got right on to remote. And we held classes ever since and didn't stop. So I think we're up and taking a breath right now. We're starting to rise up again. We've got very, very good staff. And I do believe that we're trying to get more focused of what we will do outside, what we will do inside and how we will expand our partners. We just had a recreation or an arts and culture strategic plan for five years. I do believe when it comes to Mimi Greenie and her role, I see that role like a Main Streets, I see that like a creative Salem, I see it very different from Recreation and Cultural Affairs. And I also think that just because I do recreation, I'm not the and-all and be-all of recreation. Everybody should be participating in recreation. We applaud when La Colaborativa does things. So it needs to be completely open to many people in order to do that. I do agree when it comes to the amount of animals in the city that are just wonderful, but places for them to go is very, very difficult. And I think the planning and development understands that, and we just have to, with DPW, figure out how to be able to have those spaces for these precious animals. Because I do agree, we want, we go to a park and it's not as clean as it could be, and we have children. We do also understand that we need to do more with adolescents. But I do think right now, we're back on the rebound, we've got better staff, and we're just going to keep trying. I think that we're very, very open to your ideas and to your critique, and it is just, to me, I'm very proud to be in where I am right now. I still have energy and enthusiasm for this beautiful city, and we will just continue to plague away. So.
How about the youth commission?
Youth commission right now, that's been the hardest this year. It was very hard. But we're up to, I think, five members right now. We're going to go to fifth or sixth, so I think we'll probably have our seven by the time, hopefully, or at least six by the time that all of you go on break. And they're really strong. So we thank all of you for helping us in any way or spreading your word, and we found the best way to do it was by word of mouth or by really asking people who give us a candidate. And that really has worked a lot. So thank you for asking and we're hoping to rebound that and work with the other youth commissions in the city. Norielise?
Counselor De Jesus and then Counselor Taylor.
Sure.
Thank you, Mimi. My, my, Bea, sorry.
That's okay. No problem.
Taking notes from one of my sisters over here. Thank you Bea. So you know, my children signed up for some of these programs. The programs are great, swimming classes, dance classes, I mean, it's amazing. I do agree with my fellow colleagues that, you know, the teenagers, which is where my daughter is heading right now and where, which is what many of the concerns I hear in my district is, what is my teenager going to be able to do? They don't really want to go to, you know, the programs that exist already. They want to be at the parks physically, you know, doing things in the parks. And so I'm wondering if you can just share a little bit, aside from sports, what other programs you have.
Can I, can I say, I remember this conversation with Marty Blank, who was Executive Director of Community Schools, long ago, and he says, Bea, where are you holding your classes? I said, in middle schools. He says, Bea, what, do you really think these teenagers are going to come back to a middle school? He says, think about that. I think you're going to have a struggle with that. So it's now with new administration, what more programming besides the Williams and the Clark that we can get into other schools? And that's what we have been talking about. You know, we're, and we're, again, it's not all about sports. I have so many people that come to me and their children don't do sports. They're really involved into poetry and art and the creative. So we, if you look in the booklet, I'll see, you'll see that there's a little bit more for teenagers. We have Shooting Touch, that is a program that is in Rwanda, half the time in Africa and half the time in Boston. We have brought them on, free programming. Tenacity has been incredible with the U.S. Tennis Association. We have teenagers that are in that. We have, we're bringing on, martial arts has come back, thank God, with Tara Taylor, we're bringing back with youth and adults. So we're taking a breath and hopefully rebounding. You know, I'd like to rebound faster than, you know, I think COVID is, is coming back a little bit right now, but we're, I think we're in a good, we're in a good, you know, pathway back to bringing more. And having more partnerships outside just these two buildings, which we really need to do badly. And different times of the day as well.
Awesome. So I want to echo also something that some of my colleagues mentioned. So I really do think it's, we should stick to hiring within our city, right? Instead of contracting outside the city. And full disclosure, I know you mentioned La Colaborativa earlier, part of La Colaborativa on my other hat, but why are we not able to continue to partner with some of our local agencies and nonprofits to continue to have youth in the parks during the summer? I know many of our firefighters, police officers, some folks that work in the courts used to be park rangers and they, some of my colleagues were park rangers. And not, not just that they were park rangers and that they were in the parks, but they held a circle of friends who then, hey, I'm going to go hang out at the park because my friend's a park ranger there and they're doing X, Y, and Z. So they become their own promoters of the activities that are happening in the parks. And again, full disclosure, I work for La Colaborativa and there's other agencies and program, youth programs in the city that could do that, that we can hand this task of outreach and promotion of, you know, using our parks and bringing our parks to life through our youth, right? And, and, you know, one of, I think, one of the best things that this brought throughout the years that it was happening was that you saw less drug activity and less crime in the parks. And right now, exiting COVID and we're seeing a lot of that. We're seeing a lot of the opioid crisis. We're seeing a lot of, you know, a lot of our loved ones that are having challenges with substances, sleeping in the parks or using these substances in the parks. And so it would be great to have, you know, gain more control of our parks. And I know that we didn't really touch safety, it was more programming and maintenance, but I do think that's a huge concern. In my district in particular, I have, I have this really feisty tenant down the street from me who takes it upon her own self to do walks at night because she knows that our basketball courts, if they're not being monitored or if they don't see people there, they're going to turn into points where drug activity is happening. So she's walking her dog or she's just strolling down and, you know, flashing her flashlight at people, but that's just her taking it upon herself. And I know that I, you know, there's other parts of the city that also experience this, so I just wanted to put that out there.
I think for years, summer youth employment has just done a miraculous job on pulling together people and park rangers. Again, we just came into this in 2017, 18, and there's been new leadership and a pandemic. So I think what you're saying, I'm very happy to be- So I think what you're saying, I'm very happy to be able to, we were having conversations with people from, you know, from summer youth employment to be able to see if we can expand a lot more. We do have a lot of, at least in terms of people looking at summer, like the engagement of our, of our civil, our civic service here, if you look again in our, in our booklet. But we can certainly do a lot more with teenagers. I just want to say to everybody too, there's a lot about, oh, we have to be, we have, these, these parks have to be clean. And I completely understand that. But just not that it's all in DPW. I just feel so strongly about, again, we have a campaign for mental health, a campaign for keep America beautiful. I mean, I remember as a little kid, and I'm, I'm in my 60s right now, and I remember as a child, looking at programming in the 1960s of, of, you know, Indian going down in, on a lake and seeing trash all over the place and crying. And just there was a campaign in the United States to keep the place beautiful. And I do think that we have to also look at our residents and our districts. And there has to be some campaign out there too, to continually telling people that it's not just the city per se, they have a lot to do with it, but people themselves being very conscious of, of being able to throw their trash and be able to take care of the parks. And it's not just the city to do that. And I, I don't think anybody would disagree with me on that, but I want to make sure that, you know, we, we're conscious and we start teaching our youth about, even in schools, of taking care of our, of our environment.
Thank you, B. And I look forward to hearing more about the youth commission as well. It's very exciting.
Yes, yes, thank you. And thank you for coming to me and being a champion on that as well.
We're going to need to wrap up, but I'll let Counselor Taylor, he has a question.
Counselor.
So first of all, I wanted to thank you for the great job that you do because I really believe that and I wouldn't be saying it otherwise. I'm going to just address something that, that I usually address with problems that we have in, in our community. And that is the very importance of being proactive in solving some of these problems. When Counselor Vado was talking, I was, I was, found myself nodding because of, of the things that she was saying are absolutely right. In the fact that I think teenagers in this community need more productive things to do. And, you know, I can look at your programming now. I mean, we, we work together to bring martial arts here, which is a skill that people can have.
To bring it back.
They have to practice at home, they develop it, and it, it's something that they keep for, for the rest of their life if they, if they, you know, also, things like music, right? How many kids want to learn how to play the guitar? That's something that's productive, that, that they have to practice, that, that keeps them occupied and not out on the street doing something else. Okay? So when we approach problems, we have to be proactive. And I see your role in this community as, as exactly that. And, and, and what I think we need to really think about is investing money in, in cultivating our youth. So that our youth can be more productive as they, that, that's how we get a more productive community later on. We have to play the long game here. And, and so I think it's super important to invest money, not only in additional programming to reach more kids, but also I think we do have to take a look, and I, you know, I, I was having these discussions, you know, you know, parking garage, youth center, parking garage, youth center. I mean, they're both very important. But, but I think that, I think that if we, whichever decision we make to go with first, I think that we can't neglect the other, the other thing too. But, but my, my point is, is really that there's a whole bunch of different issues that Chelsea faces. Housing, right? Public safety, different, different types of issues where we're trying our hardest to try to make the lives of our residents better, more productive, and our, and, and, you know, try to pull our city up a level. So, so I would really suggest to the city manager, I, I really don't care what structure these things take, as long as it, it really gets done and we're putting, you know, our shoulder behind an effort to really make some of this stuff happen. And I, I really believe, I mean, you know, people may be surprised that I'm saying this.
Counselor, 30 seconds.
But, you know, I, I really think that this is something that we should invest in and, and to try to be proactive.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. And everyone, again, I want to keep saying, please look in our programming. I think people get that book and don't even look at it. People come to me and say, you have guitar classes? We have guitar classes. We are having, we are having music production classes, more than people, when, when they're asking me, I know we're having them, but people are not looking and looking at what we do. And not to say that we can't do more, but we have to, for capacity, we have to fill those classes. And we have to get the advertisement and out and bring people in. And, and again, go to different places, so.
I, I just have one short, one more short comment. And that is, that is for the city manager about enforcement, okay? We're talking about poop all over the, I mean, some of this has to do with enforcement. We have the same issue with snow removal and everything else. I'm just saying, maybe a better job at enforcement and education so the public knows better, you know, selling it, like, this is your responsibility as a resident and then enforcing it. That's all.
One last word?
We're running out of time, but I keep on saying, so, city manager, town members, you know, response?
Fair enough.
Thank you. Recupero, Counselor Recupero, you have 30 seconds.
Okay. I think this whole thing went out of whack. For one, we were here for parks. We went to the recreational with Ms., you know, with B. The purpose here was to create, to clean our parks, to have a division to clean our parks. Then we went off the deep and we went to B. That's a different issue altogether. For years, the city needs, what we're trying now, for years and years, I've been trying. Years ago, they had choice to education, which did that, which helped a lot of kids. I know hundreds of kids in our city that got helped. Then when the former administration went away from that. I don't know why they did it, because of funding or whatever. But the purpose of this meeting tonight wasn't about, yo, it was about cleaning the parks and making a division of parks. We went to something else. Maybe we should go to another meeting and go back to another subcommittee, especially for you.
Counselor.
I believe that's what we should do.
I will, I apologize, but we've run out of time, so we got to give Ricky one minute. That concludes this meeting. We'll continue this at a later time.